Sean. Sean is a bit of a jolly fool. He's with a, he's the pastor of First Presbyterian. Oh, that's Paul.
Paul's Paul St.
Saint Peter's Episcopal.
Oh, I know where that is. That's your train of thought. Good excuse, I'll play Coolidge.
He did get married. I was there.
That's right, that's right. Is the business going okay too?
All right, good evening, everyone. It is 7:05, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Casa Grande. We'll call the meeting in order. Our first orders of business are our indication and our pledge of allegiance. So please remain standing. Tonight, we have Father Sean Rutledge from the Saint Peter's Episcopal Church.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all the people of Casa Grande. And heavenly Father, in your word, you've given us a vision of that holy city to which all the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the city of Casa Grande. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with different talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Our pledge. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Thank you, Anthony. All right, let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
And next, we have considering our approval of the minutes, several minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated May 1st, 2024, as well as set the minutes of the Industrial Development Authority meeting of March 1st, 2023. Consider, also accept the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission meeting of April 2nd, 2024, accept the minutes of the Arts and Culture meeting of April 16th, 2024, and accept the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board minutes, April 18th, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission meeting of April 23rd, 2024.
Second?
Our motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is our claims against the city, D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated May 1st, 2024 through May 14th, 2024, as presented.
Second?
Our motion, can I have a second? Oh, we got a second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, for the council, we have no changes this evening.
Any changes from council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve it as it's presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting agenda is approved. No special presentation tonight. We do have consent agenda items, so all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anyone have anything you want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, anybody from the public? All right, seeing none, then.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Our motion and a second. Laurie, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. I was just getting a little worried, Gloria, because this was like page three of 432. It's gonna be a long meeting tonight.
It's all the attachments.
Okay. All right, next is our item H, which is our call to the public. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. I would ask if, as you come forward, you don't have to have filled out a comment card, but if there is anyone here who would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. Would ask you to give your name and address, so we know where you're from. And please keep your comments to three minutes, and remember that it is not an agendized item, so we cannot comment on it. Is there anybody here who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public comment, and we'll move on to, I think, item L. And L1, this is our public meetings, public hearings, open records review, and closed records reviews. And we have a couple of public hearings here tonight. The first one is item L1. Larry? Or Mary Ellen?
Hello, mayor and council. Tonight, we're here to discuss or have a public meeting for the program year 2024, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. The annual action plan is used as a tool for implementing the city of Casa Grande's five-year consolidated plan. The purpose, the primary purpose of HUD programs is to develop viable communities by promoting integrated approaches to providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities for the low-to-moderate-income people, households in our community. Staff is recommending that the mayor and council adopt the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan as being presented tonight. CDBG national objectives: Benefit to low- to moderate-income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slum and blight, and meet a need having a particular urgency. Here's a map of our low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods in our community right now. This is based on census data. So most of the programs either have to serve the low-to-moderate-income individuals, or they can serve an area that's listed here on the map. We had estimated our CDB allocation this year to be 462,638. Unfortunately, we received less. Our allocation is going to be 434,580. Part of the process for the annual action plan is we have to hold two public hearings. We held the first one on February 28th, 2024, at the Mondo Anaya Center. We had four people in attendance. We discussed various items such as eligible activities that the CDBG program can fund, and threw out ideas, and which programs are working for our community and which ones they want to see changed. It was just discussion. Of course, then the application process was open from February 29th through March 26th. And from April 10th through, geez, I can't speak tonight, through May 9th, the public comment was open for the community to focus, to read and give us any feedback on the annual action plan as we put it in draft form. We did not receive any comments. What the committee is recommending to you tonight is that the allocation remain, we're going to fund the same programs that we funded last year. Of course, it's at a reduced rate. We have the Opportunity Tree. They have a new program called Supported Employment Expect Develop and Support Services for $7,100. Seeds of Hope, the Angeles de Esperanza program, which is their senior connections program, is $15,896. Community Action Human Resource Agency for their Casagrand homeless services, $14,405. The Boys and Girls Club, the Len Cola Club Membership Scholarship for $4,437. Against Abuse Housing and Support for Abuse Victims, $17,138. And Casagrand Police Department for their homeless outreach team for $6,211. There is a maximum that we are allowed to allocate to public services, which is 15% maximum, and we've met that here. The rest of the funding is being recommended is the City of Casagrand Public Works Department for the sidewalk and ADA improvements on the east side neighborhoods, particularly on Brown Avenue, for $103,534. Continue the City of Casagrand Community Development Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program for $103,533. And to continue the City of Casagrand Planning and Development Enhanced Code Enforcement Officer at $75,410. And also the City of Casagrand for Administration, again, we're limited, we could do 20% maximum, $86,916. I would like just to highlight some of the current programs that we're funding. The Opportunity Tree, this is their supportive aging program. They are going to change to an employment model next year if funded. We also have code enforcement. I think everybody was aware of Fourth Street. This is the before pictures, and these are the after pictures. And again, that meets our low-to-moderate-income area, so that's definitely been funded through this program. The Boys and Girls Club will continue to fund the Len Cola program. And then I have to highlight our Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program. This was a current project, or recent project that we completed. You can see how old the home was, and then some dream pictures. They had old cement kind of piping and sewer, so we had to replace all of the sewer lines, and this was the completed project. We're really happy with that project. That's all I'd like to present tonight. If you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Lisa?
Thank you, Mary. I can't believe we're here again. It seems like the years go so fast, right? So I know you said the application process was open February 29th through the 6th, and it looks like we're funding the current organizations, agencies. Were there any additional applications that came in?
No. We posted it on our website. We post it in the newspaper, and then, not in the newspaper, I'm sorry, just the annual action plan, but we do post it on our newspaper. And then I bring it up in all the public meetings that we attend, and if anybody wants an application, I send it to them.
Yeah, most of those agencies are probably the most active agencies in town, so.
Right.
They tend to be on top of it.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, thank you.
And then our, the home rehab, is that the last one? It's quite amazing, the rehabilitation that is done for some of these homes that were basically not livable before, so.
We're really doing a lot more, it seems like, in the east side. We have, we're doing another one on Coolidge Avenue, the same model. So that one should be done by the end of June, so I'd love for all of you guys to come out and see it. It's gonna be really nice.
I've been there.
And then we'll do another one on, we're doing a minor rehab project over on the west side. And we'll be finished with that one here in the next couple of weeks.
That one's looking really, really good. That's next door to my church.
It's really looking nice.
It's really nice.
Well, you might have to come and see the inside when it's completed.
Any other comments or questions for Mary? Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. So no more comments from council, then I'll open the public hearing to anyone here in attendance that would like to address item L1. This is for approval of resolution number 5648, which is adopting Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for next year. All right, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing, and we will call for resolution, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5648, a resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5648 as presented.
Second?
Our motion and a second. Laurie, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item L2. This is also a public hearing. This is amending zoning ordinance 1178. Mr. Gagliardi?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. So the item in front of you this evening is a request to rezone property known as the Town Site P A D. This property is part of the Roping Ridge Annexation, which was recently annexed into the city of Casa Grande. Roping Ridge is comprised of approximately 218 acres. Now, previously, in front of city council, you had entertained both the annexation and initial zoning designations of the Roping Ridge Annexation. As you see, most of these 218 acres were zoned urban ranch, because that was the most comparable zone district to what it was when it was in the county. It was general rural. But there were a few other properties within the annexation area zoned differently. You notice the yellow area off of Pirat Road, that was zoned single-family residential R1. And then towards the northeast corner of the annexation area, there was 31 acres, and within those 31 acres, there was an R3 piece and a B2 piece, because those were similar to how that property was zoned in Pinell County. A few months ago, you did approve the Piratley Point P A D. That was for the acreage that lied west of Pirat Road. That particular P A D allowed for light industrial along the southern portion with two different densities of multifamily towards Early Road with a commercial area at the hard corner of Early and Pirat. This evening, we're talking about another rezone within the Roping Ridge Annexation, and that's the area outlined in white, and it is proposed as the Town Site P A D. And that's what we'll be discussing this evening. It is a 31-acre site, and proposed is a 31.4-acre area for multifamily use. That would be replacing the area that's currently zoned R3, which is multifamily. And it is proposed at 24 dwelling units per acre, which would yield up to 320 units. They are proposing up to four stories at 55 feet in height. And then the remnant, the area that amounts to 17.69 acres, labeled storage on this plan, is the area that's currently zoned B2, and that would accommodate RV, boat, and self-storage uses. Now, both the B2 zoning and the R3 zoning could remain as-is. In theory, the R3 could be developed for multifamily, and the B2 could be developed as self-storage and RV storage. For the self-storage, there would have to be a conditional use permit considered. But what the P A D does is it allows a little bit more flexibility with development standards. It would allow the storage to be a use-by-right within this zone district, and it does give some flexibility to the R3, what is currently zoned R3, in terms of the height and number of stories. I like to digress just a little bit. The reason why this site is called Town Site P A D is it sits within the town site of Arizona. It was platted in 1892, and one of the founders was named David Thomas, and he had a daughter named Ola. And so when naming the area, he wanted to call it something with Arizona as inspiration, but he used, but he also wanted to provide something that memorialized his daughter, so he swapped out Ona with Ola, and that's why it's called Arizona. So back to business, I just thought that was kind of interesting.
That's a trivia question.
Exactly. I'll quiz you later. One of the, one of the submissions with this P A D was a conceptual layout, which is really helpful. Sometimes P A Ds do not provide as detailed of a conceptual plan. Of course, what you see on the screen here will ultimately be replaced and finalized by the submittal of a major site plan, should this zoning be approved. But this helps identify how the applicant intends to lay out buildings and how the proposed development standards can be met within the respective acreages for the self-storage, RV storage area, and for the multifamily area. Within the multifamily, multifamily area, they are proposing 12 multifamily buildings. As I mentioned, there would be up to 320 units. They're conceptually proposing 88 one-bedroom, 208 two-bedroom, and 24 three-bedroom units. There would also be a clubhouse and other open space amenities. Within the area to be known as Citadel at Town Site, which would be the RV, boat, and self-storage areas, there's a mixture of storage buildings that are 12 feet tall, some open RV and boat storage areas to the south, as well as some covered RV and boat storage areas. And there would also be an office and an accessory dwelling unit for that storage facility towards the north end of the property. When reviewing P A Ds, these are the criteria that have to be evaluated and supported in order to recommend approval, and I just want to go over the highlighted criteria with you real quick. The first is the interrelationship to the plan elements, both on and off the property. If you look at what is surrounding the site, both in terms of existing and proposed, it's in an ideal location for the uses and standards that they are requesting. Immediately to the east of the site is about a 16-acre area that was acquired by APS, and on the consent agenda this evening, you actually approved its final plat. APS is intending an electrical substation at that hard corner of Arizona and Early. So this site will not have neighbors to the immediate east. And then to the west of the site is more of the Roping Ridge Annexation area and a portion of the south as well. Immediately to the, to the south and southwest portion of the Town Site P A D is the Knoll and Dairy, and it's currently zoned urban ranch, but it was part of the Roping Ridge Annexation, and likely that urban ranch is But it was part of the Roping Ridge Annexation, and likely that urban ranch zoning is going to be just a holding zone. It's highly likely that within the next couple of months, we'll see a rezone request for that property. None of this area south of Early, within the Roping Ridge Annexation area, has certificates of assured water supply. So the types of uses that we're going to be seeing are those that aren't requiring of a certificate. So probably you'll see some commercial uses proposed, institutional-type uses, and maybe some type of residential that doesn't require multiple individual lots. Then Early Road serves as a significant buffer between the Town Site and the developing Carlton Commons neighborhood on the north side of Early. There has been some concern about the applicant's request to go up to four stories in height. And that is probably the most significant compatibility concern. But the back of the lots within the Carlton Commons neighborhood to the proposed multifamily building locations is a distance of 240 feet. That's because Early Road currently sits as a 55-foot-wide half-street. But at the time of development, on the south side of Early Road, there will be an additional 55-foot right-of-way dedication. So you'll have 110 feet worth of roadway or right-of-way. And there's a significant setback from the backs of the lots within Carlton Commons in the north side of Early. There's a pretty large landscape tract. And similarly, the applicant is proposing a 75-foot setback for the apartment buildings from his property line. There'll also be a six-foot to 10-foot wall bordering three sides of the P A D. Along the front edge will likely be a pony wall that will be about three feet in height. And then there'll also be some landscape buffering as well. The other area of concern is along the south boundary, because along the south isn't entirely the Roping Ridge Annexation. Towards the southeast is the Carlton Commons neighborhood, which does have certificates of assured water supply. And they are in the preliminary plating stage for single-family homes. So there is some sensitivity between the single-family homes and this P A D. But the way they arrange the land use is that area is abutting the storage area. And there is a development standard within the P A D guide that no storage of vehicles or equipment taller than 10 feet is allowed along the south border within the first 50 feet. So that helps provide some buffer between the backs of the single-family homes that may develop in Carlton Commons and the type of storage that will occur on the other side of their six-to-10-foot wall. With regard to conformance with the general plan, this area sits within the neighborhood's land use category. Within neighborhoods, it says that commercial development is allowed on sites up to 30 acres, which their commercial site falls well under. It's at 17 and a half. And it also says that no more than 12% of neighborhood's land use within one-half mile can be commercial. When doing the buffer around this site at a one-half-mile radius, there is some area that is commercial, and that's within the Pierrett Lee Point P A D at the hard corner of Early and Pierrot. But when factoring the amount of acreage allocated for that, with the amount of acreage proposed for commercial within the Town Site P A D, you have 5.3% out of the allowable 12%. So that is met. And then with regard to multifamily, the general plan allows a maximum density of 24 dwelling units per acre, and that is what they are proposing, is a maximum of that density. And then also the maximum site size for properties with over 12 deuse per acre is 20 acres, and this site also meets it as the multifamily area is about 13 acres in size. And then the other criteria of the general plan is that no more than 20% of the neighborhood's land use within one-half mile can be for multifamily. And when running that analysis, about 4.7% out of the allowable 20% is utilized when factoring that within the Pierrett Lee Point P A D, there was a multifamily area that falls within that half a mile. Changes in zoning classification have to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city in order for it to be considered in conformance with the general plan. And of course, here we are this evening discussing more multifamily. So we do have to take a look at whether multifamily at this location is appropriate. And how it speaks to the housing needs and supply study that has been recently presented in front of council and planning commission. And it is worth reminding council that that housing needs and supply study did determine that the city does have an adequate supply of multifamily. However, staff does recommend approval of this multifamily land use because it's zoned R3. It does already allow multifamily at the density that is being proposed within this P A D. It's just simply this P A D will give it some additional development standards that the R3 zone wouldn't have that level of flexibility to achieve. And then multifamily in this area will add to a housing mix and diversity amid a lot of the planned single-family dwellings in the area. That is kind of a bittersweet, I guess, because a lot of times people think that multifamily and single-family uses should be segregated as much as possible. And in some ways, yes, that's true. But our general plan also strives to have a mixture and diversity of housing types. And I think the best way to achieve that without creating a compatibility issue is making sure that there are some standards in place that bolster the compatibility. And I think here, the fact that there's Early Road to the north, which will ultimately be designed to the same standards, I say think Cottonwood Lane. That's also a minor arterial of 110 feet wide. And the fact you have APS immediately to the east and uses to the west that are not single-family, I think that the multifamily here does help add to the diversity without creating a compatibility issue. The other criteria I want to talk about is the impact of the plan on existing and anticipated traffic. So at the time of the major site plan, should this P A D be approved, the applicant will be required to submit a traffic report. And that will assess the number of trips that are proposed to be generated by the uses. And it will also take a look at the roadways that are used to serve this site. And if that trip generation impacts the level of service of those roadways to an extent that it puts it to an unacceptable level. In order for the major site plan to be approved, the applicant would have to propose methods to improve those roadways or modify the intensity of the use to where the roadways are no longer at an unacceptable level. And as part of development, there would be roadway improvements required for Early Road and any other roads that are seen to be affected to an unacceptable level. Exact driveway placement on the site will be determined at the time of the major site plan. However, the conceptual layout does provide for some flexibility in providing some alternative driveway locations. That's also important in terms of flow of traffic and how frequently cars are pulling off the road to get into or onto properties. The P A D proposes a parking standard that matches the city parking code for storage and multifamily uses. So that will follow the city code, and it is determined to be adequate. With regard to the public notification process, the procedures met what's required by the code. There were notices mailed out to owners of property within 300 feet, and I had not received any inquiries or comments. I do believe city council did receive some correspondence from a resident-at-large that had some concerns about the multifamily. But as I mentioned, I think with the 240-foot separation, staff was able to make a recommendation to planning commission to support the P A D in its entirety. At its April meeting, planning commission did vote five to two to forward a recommendation to council to approve the rezone of this R3 and B2 property to the Town Site Planned Area Development, subject to the following condition, and that's our standard condition regarding right-of-way dedication, and that would apply to Early. Should we need Early Road right-of-way prior to when we would ordinarily get it, which would be at the time of building permit, we would have the ability to seek that right-of-way earlier. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Go ahead.
James, I have a question for you. I think recently we've approved five three-story apartment complexes. And I guess I was under the assumption there was only three stories, because that's as high as they could go. This one's four stories, 55 feet. Is there a different standard? I mean, shouldn't the other five have asked for four stories too?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Lavender, as a P A D, they do have the ability to ask for an alternate height. I think in some of those other multifamily requests that were in front of you, if they were in P A Ds, they would have had that same ability to request it. I think whether or not we send the applicant down that road in requesting a greater height is going to depend on what is in the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, because of what was surrounding it and the amount of setbacks, we were comfortable with supporting that request. If it were a traditional R3 zone, 35 feet would be the maximum height, which would accommodate up to three stories.
Are you concerned that we're kind of opening the box now, and we're going to see more requests for 55 feet?
Well, I think it's going to be case-specific. I don't think that we're going to see a whole lot more multifamily requests come in organically as it is. However, a lot of the ones that we've pre-approved either through zoning, I'd have to check to see what their entitlements are, but I would imagine a lot of them have their height already stipulated. And so if they went to amend the P A D to increase the height, we'd have to look at what was motivating that. And if it was to increase the density, we probably couldn't support such an amendment. In this case, the density is not changing in terms of what they'd be allowed to do as an R3 property versus a P A D. But I think the applicant who is here tonight would be able to tell you some of the reasons why he's thinking four stories, what its particular advantages might be. One is as a four-story building, the building code automatically requires an elevator. And so that would definitely be a perk, because most apartments that are three stories or less don't require elevators for multifamily use. So even though it is at a greater height, it does have a convenience that would be an amenity that doesn't exist in other residential products.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
James, has there been any discussion about additional school sites down in this area?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Huddleston, yes. In fact, the city often meets with the school district land planner, Tom Wallaber. And he has been identifying areas, and they do have a map of of locations nearby where there's either agreements in place or areas that they do need to work with that respective landowner to do maybe some type of agreement for a school site. So they're aware of this annexation and the proposed land uses, but to what extent they've looked at, you know, putting pen to paper as how many additional students that'll yield, I can't tell you. But they do have it kind of mapped out as to where future school sites should go.
Okay, thank you. So this one depends too on the major site plan, obviously, as to the actual height and actual everything else that will come of it and traffic. So that's going to be interesting to see. Because right now, as we're doing, is doing the P A D overlay, so we're not automatically saying it's going to be four-story building, correct?
That's a good point, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Herman. Because really, as a P A D, it's saying they can go up to four stories. At the time of major site plan, they could propose a three-story development. They just couldn't exceed four. Also, as part of the major site plan review, we could look at other scenarios where the buildings closest to Early stay at three, and the buildings further back are four. The P A D doesn't go into that level of requirement. It just says the multifamily can go up to four stories, but they are providing a 75-foot setback from Early. So it's a greater setback than the height of the building. So ordinarily, in the R3, you could be as close as 20 feet, and that would be for a 35-foot-tall building. So that setback to height ratio is expanded quite a bit for this project.
And it's nice to have a pretty good concept drawing. We don't get that a lot of times at this stage, so that helps a lot for people to see what's going on.
Lisa?
I want to go back to the drawing here. So you talked about the requirement for four stories. If they go to four stories, there has to be an elevator. Would it have to be throughout the whole property? Because it's still pretty spread out. A lot of times when you see a four-story, they're pretty much, you know, I mean, yeah, put together. So it will be in all those different buildings?
My understanding, and the applicant can opine on this greater, but any building that has four stories or greater would have to provide an elevator. I don't think they meet the code if one of the multiple four stories has an elevator. But you're right, because I've seen developments up in the Phoenix area that are four or more stories, and they do tend to be longer built. I mean, they take up more square footage, because if you're putting in an elevator, might as well get a better bang for your buck on that. But the building code probably has some sort of minimum, or excuse me, maximum separation from elevators too. So if it's too big, they may have to provide you know, more than one elevator. So I'm not exactly, I don't know what all the rule requirements are for that.
And I know what councilmember Lavender talked about, the opening up at Kenner Rooms for four stories. And of course, that's concerning for me. I mean, we even going to three stories has been a huge change for us here. You know, but I do, you know, the location, and you talk about compatibility, you know, I think the location could be good to have something like this. And I do like, when you talked about the diversity of the types of projects, you know, with the RV parking and, you know, what's surrounding that area is something that could be good, beneficial to some of our residents too. So so yeah, but I do, I'm really not, I don't love the idea of four stories here, but because of the location, could work, yeah.
Was there a discussion when we were talking about the four stories? The first thing I thought about was the concern for our fire department, and I know that we have, you know, great equipment. And in response to respond time in that area, would that cause, was there any discussion that would cause pause on that four-story and having availability? Should there be a fire?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember McBride. So fire does look at that at the time of major site plan. However, I can tell you that the buildings, because of the building code and fire code, would be would be required to be sprinkled, and then in the review of the buildings, it has to have a certain drive access width around the building within so much distance from the building to allow for full coverage of the fire truck's spread of the building during a fire. And as long as they can accommodate for that on the major site plan, they're fine, but the fire department has equipment to accommodate buildings that tall.
And 503 is where the bucket truck is located, which is right up Pert Road, so, in this particular case. 502, I'm sorry, I said 503, 502.
502.
So, okay. Any other questions or comments for Jim? All right, it's a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor for the public hearing. Again, as a reminder, if you do want to address this issue, please state your name and your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and also understand, well, yeah, keep them three minutes. Anyone?
Lori Johnson, story 1245 East Floral Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona. As I did at the planning and zoning meeting, I again say, please, no four-story apartments. We look around and we have all these three-story apartments, and it's kind of overwhelming. And when you start looking at a four-story building, and the houses in Carlton Commons are all single-story houses, and it's hard to block out four stories. I don't care what the distance, how much landscaping, but I think that we would really be pushing it for four stories. And I want to go on record saying, please, put a restriction on the four stories because it's just overwhelming. I don't care where it is in Casa Grande, there's always single-family homes and people close by, and that's a lot of buildings to put in that many four-story apartments. Thank you.
Robert, can you open that? Do you need the clicker?
I don't need the clicker. If you could just have where it shows the site plan. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to start off with a little bit about who I am. I moved here from Mobley, Missouri in 1978. I've been in Arizona the entire time. I started in construction when I was younger. I started buying properties when I was 18, started buying rentals when I was 29, and I would like to just say to the council members and to the citizens of Casa Grande what type of person I am. As a, the way that I like to have rental properties is I like having them very nice. I like treating people very well. I'm going to share a small story with you. I had Greg and Carol Spencer, a mom and adult son, living together in one of my rentals. They called me up on Friday night in July, and the overnight lows are triple digits. I know for Arizona statutes, I don't have to do anything for these people for five days. I told Greg, I said, you and your mom, go get a hotel. I thought about it. My AC on that house was 20 years old. It was just a fan motor, didn't care. I called my AC guy, we put a brand-new unit on there. I came and met him at the property with the new unit on Sunday, and I paid his, paid their hotel bill. The mom, who was 65 years old, she started crying. She said, David, I am 65 years old, and I have rented my entire life, and nobody has treated me this well. So the reason for the four stories is nothing more. I had it designed as three stories. When, before APS bought the land, it was three stories. But because that homes could potentially went in there, I imposed greater open areas on myself. I imposed a larger landscape buffer, and I held the buildings back, trying to be a good neighbor. But once APS bought that, it kind of opened up. Now we have three sides of that apartment complex is going to be commercial or that substation. And then what, 250-foot distance to a single story, yes, you can see a four-story, but if you think about it, a four-story building, now I am putting nine-foot ceilings in mind, so it's a little bit nicer, but the difference in my building, if you have the foundation in the roof, the difference from a three-story to a four-story is 11 feet, which is two foot, eight inches taller than my hand. For two foot, eight inches tall, you know, 11 feet of view, this is what we get. And I'm saying, we as a community, and we're talking about your coworkers, members of your church, anybody who might be staying here, we have less congestion in buildings. We have more parking. We have more dog parks. And, you know, somebody might say, well, you're just doing this because you have less buildings to build. For every three, four stories I have, I save one roof and one foundation, but I install six elevators. Six elevators cost more than one roof and one foundation. It just does. The only reason I'm doing this is if any one of us had our mother or our father or a member of our church living in there, and you had an elevator to go up to your, I don't care if you're on the second floor, some of us got bad knees, but especially the third floor, hucking your groceries all the way up. And so when I was doing this, designing, some of the things I put in there was 60 garages. Every single garage has a 50 amp 220 charger for all EV cars. I put in like an extra 100 parking spaces. How many New York developers do that? It doesn't line their pockets. They try to pack you in there like sardines. So I really am trying to do this. Now, if we can't stomach to look at additional 11 feet, you know, for all these amenities, you know, I'm open for whatever you guys suggest, but I'm not doing it to make money for me. I'm doing it to make a really nice product for Casa Grande. My daughter lives here, and anyway, so, any questions?
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other public comments? Mr. Nellin?
I'm Daniel Nellin. I have the property to the west there, and I'm basically for it. He's going to put a good four-story in for elevators for everybody, and I think that is going to be good, and it don't bother me at all, so, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.450, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from general business and multifamily residential to planned area development on property located generally 530 feet west of Arizona Road on the south side of Earley Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.450 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
No.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right. Next is our reports, so I'm going to start to my left. Mr. Lavender?
None, no reports, sir.
Donna?
Quickly, the Kohler grand opening was a great event. We welcomed them to Casa Grande. We have the biz outlook for the Chamber of Commerce. That was great to have an update on that, and congratulations to Casa Grande Main Street for their annual meeting. They had a good showing, and they shared some of the new artwork, the doors downtown that were just gorgeous by our local artists, so a lot of things going on in town. Graduations are coming up. I had one of my own with my granddaughter Saturday. I was very proud of her and wish everybody to have a good weekend and a safe weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. We had our last youth commission meeting of the year, and we voted on new members, so we'll be seating a new commission, and those names will come forward at the next meeting probably, and for our approval. And it was a great, we have five seniors, and we had a nice little kind of ceremony for them, and they got some gifts, and everyone talked about them. It was a neat, neat little thing that we did. Fire Station 503 is taking shape over there. You can see the curved roof line now. Looks, it's going to look pretty neat. And then I did notice, driving around, the signs for the Quartz and Sewer Line Intercept Project, kind of telling people what's going on. I love the concept. The signs are a bit verbose. I had to pull over to read it, but it's really neat, so people know what's going on, and if you want to know, you know, it's going to tell what's happening, so. I like stuff like that, and I know that we're going to start doing more stuff like that, thanks to the manager and PIO department to get the word out there of what's going on and what we're doing with this money, so, thanks.
And Councilmember Lavender was a little modest when he said nothing's going on. There's, or you don't have anything to report. No, I just wanted to say, you know, just everything that is going on with our school districts. And I just, you know, I went to the Casa Grande Union Scholarship Night, and it was amazing how there were 97 students that received over $6 million in scholarships. So that's just something that we should be proud of, you know, for all these students to first apply, you know, for scholarships and so many dollars. So I'm just, you know, and that's just one school. So I'm just so in awe of so many of the students there, and I feel good about our future generation and what they're going to do, so thank you for all of that. And then, yes, Kohler, just, you know, again, thank you to all our staff. I mean, this is something that's gone on for a long time, and it's just amazing, when I was there, to just imagine that that company is right here in Casa Grande. I mean, it was just high-tech, you know, the state-of-the-art facility, and to see all those Midwestern people here, you know, excited to be here, it was just amazing, just so proud. And again, you know, congratulations to all of our high school and elementary graduates, and, you know, good things coming, but I hope everyone stays safe. When you celebrate, stay safe. So, that's it for me.
Bob?
Mayor, thank you to you and the rest of the council for your patience and understanding in an excused absence two weeks ago. Been a rough couple of weeks, but we're getting through it. Thank you.
Good. Feeling better? Yeah. All right. Well, yeah, I just, I mean, we've got graduation tomorrow night, graduation Thursday, right? So we've got Union on Tuesday and Vista on Thursday, so congratulations to all the seniors. Also, I want to send out my big congratulations to Kohler for their grand opening last week. It was, it's an impressive facility. I think they're up to 150 employees now, 200 maybe by end of summer, 400, 500 at build-out, so, again, good-paying jobs, a lot of engineering jobs there. I met several of them that were working on the floor, and we want to welcome Kohler to our community, so. Didn't have a whole lot else. I was in Washington, DC a couple of weeks ago. It was a good trip. Got to see a lot of our legislative delegates from Arizona. I got to talk to a lot of agencies like EPA and some others that can tend to be burdensome on municipalities. Anyway, we did have a good conversation with them, and I think it's good to have them see us and to understand that we are a real, you know, organization. There are real people behind the name of the city of Casa Grande, so it's, I think it's imperative that we continue to be active in that arena.
Who else did you meet in Washington, DC?
Mark Kelly.
Five of my fraternity brothers?
Oh, and five of your fraternity brothers. On the roof of the Watergate Hotel.
I was getting pictures.
Matt and five of his fraternity brothers from ASU. It was a small-world story, anyway. Just also an update on single-family building permits. The latest report is out in April. We had another 77 new permits. That's a total of 258 this year, so it's a 26% increase over last year. So, single-family homes continue to be built. As all, everyone has seen, if you drive around the city at all, the apartment complexes are also continuing to be built. I think the Agave House will be renting by August, so, and I know I've shared that information with both superintendents, so hopefully they can get that information to their teachers, some of the new teachers that are coming in, because I think some of them are certainly in that affordable housing tract, so. That's all I've got, and just want to wish everybody a good evening, and we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for sending me up, too. That was pretty recent.
Yeah.
I mean, considering that.